Please let me call this Bristol Tennessee City Council meeting to order January 3rd, 2017. Terry, would you please call our roll?
Vice Mayor Jackman.
Here.
Councilwoman Renan. Councilman Farrell.
Here.
Mayor King.
Here.
Councilwoman Powell.
Here.
I'd like to welcome everyone and thank you for attending tonight's meeting. Your interest in city government is much appreciated. There are a number of opportunities to speak on matters of city business this evening. A sheet explaining those opportunities has been made available to you when entering the meeting room. As we go forward with tonight's agenda, I will note each time when public comment is welcome. In addition, a sign up sheet has been provided as you enter in the chambers for those individuals desiring to address city council during the appearance of citizens in the section, appearance of citizens section in our agenda. I'd like to ask John Crawford, former commissioner of Sullivan County and representative-elect, to lead us in our invocation and to also lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Those that are able and willing, please stand. Remain standing after the prayer and we'll say the pledge. Dear gracious heavenly Father, Lord, we come before you tonight thanking you for your many blessings, thanking you for looking down upon us and granting us the opportunity to serve the people. God, we just ask that you'd go with us tonight, give us wisdom, allow these council people to have your leadership, Lord, making decisions to move the city of Bristol forward. God, again, we thank you for everything you've done. Thank you for forgiving us of our sins and shortcomings and we ask these things in your precious name, the name of Jesus. Amen. Please face the flag and salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. Sorrell, do we have any additions to our agenda this evening?
No, Mayor, the agenda is complete.
Okay. This evening, it is our privilege to recognize Lieutenant Governor Ron Ramsey and wife Cindy with him today as well for his 24 years of service representing the citizens of northeast Tennessee in the Tennessee General Assembly. He began his service in Tennessee House of Representatives in 1992. He was elected to serve in the state senate in 1996 and held that position through 2016. Amazing. In 2007, he was selected by his peers to serve as lieutenant governor and speaker of the senate, a position he held for the remainder of his years in the senate. His innumerable accomplishments have left an indelible mark on this region and of the state of Tennessee. It is our great honor that we recognize Lieutenant Governor Ron Ramsey this evening for all of his accomplishments to our regions. We are a better place because of his service. If you'll please, both of you go up to the podium.
But don't talk yet, right? Be sure to tell Ron not to talk yet.
We want to offer the, for all of our council members, to give a few words of what they think.
Thank you.
Well, one of the first times that I had the privilege of meeting Ron was in a faculty meeting at Avoca Elementary School and there was great concern over some of the legislation that had been put into place. And I remember you looking at all of us and saying, "What are you so afraid of?" And you were very gracious and you listened and you explained to us what the legislation would really mean. And throughout your history in the state legislature, you've been a friend to your constituents, you've taken it all very seriously and wanted us to understand what it was that was going on in Nashville. And for that and for your friendship through all these years, we can't thank you enough. To Cindy, it does matter who leads, doesn't it? But it matters as much who supports those who are leading. And you, I remember watching you drop the girls off as a home room mother. I mean, you did so many things for so many and could never thank you enough. The outcome of all of that is that you have a beautiful family. And regardless of what's been accomplished in Nashville, the accomplishment here at home is absolutely one for us to all aspire to. So we thank you both for your service.
Thank you. Thank you.
One of the opportunities, as I first got to know Ron, we were out at, right there in Blountville, under the pavilion across from the church and there was a little ladies picnic as you were getting ready to run for governor and the opportunity came up and you shared it very clearly, you know, stay close to your work boots, they always have a place. And that priority, as I've seen over the last few years, as we've spent time together, is seeing, number one, the priority of faith in your life, of family being so important, and then being able to say, you know, it does matter, I need to be down there in Nashville making a difference, but there's a time for family. And you found some of that sweet spot now with the grandkids and everything else and also with Cindy, those opportunities to see, both of you have taught me leadership, Ron, through the leadership of setting the vision and then Cindy of being able to help see how things can come together and so many of those things that you do in the background that so many people don't realize. And it's, you know, even getting all those bookings and everything ready for those weekends of wherever we are, to have an auction for the family to come out and help get it done. But both of those, I so appreciate that example.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll piggyback on Lee's Avoca experience because I think that's, we went through Avoca, each of us with three children, pretty close to the, two of them the same age, Tiffany was a little bit younger than Carl. And it was great to get to know you at that point and I think that began before you headed off to Nashville even. So really appreciate that. Also, I'll just say I've enjoyed working with Tiffany over the years in different roles at the chamber, et cetera, as well. And she's somebody you obviously are very proud of. But I was also gonna say, I see Beth Reinhardt out there and if I were, if I had a really good memory, I might pick up on some of the stories that I heard at the chambers party that they had, but this is a public meeting. But I could list some of the things that I found very surprising and anyway, it was a great event, Beth, and y'all did a fantastic job and it was a whole lot of fun to hear, especially from people who grew up with you, played basketball, et cetera. That was a lot of fun to hear about some of your adventures at a younger age.
Thank you, Margaret.
So Ron, before we, before we let you say a few words, we have a few things up here we'd like to give you.
What, you gonna say anything, Chair, or are you afraid to?
Well...
No, just kidding. How about two words? How about two words? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. I figured I'm gonna go around, okay?
And Ron?
Okay, here we go.
Here we go.
All right, that's cool. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's all right. It is heavy. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's good. Thank you. Oh my goodness. Oh my goodness. My goodness. All right. Fantastic. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you. That's my turn and then Cindy's gonna say, now Cindy's not a speaker, she's been behind the scenes and likes staying behind the scenes. I will say, when I had those 18 months I was running for governor, there were a few times that she had to give speeches across the state and did a fantastic job doing that, but that's not what she likes to do. Now me, on the other hand, is just the opposite. Of course, if I see a television camera, I'm kind of attracted to it. But I just wanna say thank you all, that I grew up here in Bristol. Technically, my address and my home where I grew up was Blountville. But when we quote, "went to town," we came to Bristol, no doubt about it, coming to town. When we come to town, I can remember my aunts, my mom, my dad and others bringing us to H.P. King. I thought about that on the way up here. I loved going to H.P. King because I could ride the elevator. We didn't have an elevator in Blountville, okay? Only elevator on you was at H.P. King Company. So growing up here, I went to Avoca Elementary School myself, at that time it was a county school, of course. And when I got out of Avoca in the seventh grade was when they built Central East and I went on to Central. But I grew up, what's now City School at Avoca. My mom taught there for 30 years, so to say I have had ties to Bristol would be an understatement. And I am pretty proud of what we've been able to accomplish the last few years. All we gotta do is drive out the pinnacle, the piece of legislation that we passed that was ironically enough meant for another piece of property but ended up being out there, which worked out well. I didn't care which one got it, just bottom line is Steve Johnson said, "Ist an Eskimo." It ended up being out there. And so, I just wanna thank you. What an easy decision. I mean, I've loved doing this, I still love doing this, I really do, but it becomes a point in your life when you have to say enough's enough. And when I ran, Cindy and I thought about this and prayed about this and talked about this back in January and February and I had set a date of March the 16th. That was four weeks before the filing deadline. And I thought, if I'm gonna do this, I need to have someone else have at least four weeks, actually it's three weeks before filing deadline, I had at least three weeks before they could make up a decision. And then my daughter Sheena came home one day and I still wasn't sure, what does God want me to do? And I came home one day about the middle of February, Sheena said, "Daddy, a date has been set for my C-section for little Sadie, my first granddaughter to be born." I said, "Really? When's that?" She said, "March 16th." I go, "Okay, God, I think I got the decision." So I literally got on the senate floor and made my announcement and drove home and little Sadie was born on the way home. I saw, we FaceTimed on the way home, what an easy decision. But when I ran four years ago, I had one little grandchild and when I ran now, I've got five. And if I'd have run again, Parker would have been in the fourth grade when I got out and I wanna go wake up one day and my grandkids be graduating from high school. And I said, "Enough's enough." And so here we are. I've got six more days left. Next Tuesday at noon, I'll go down to Nashville, our constitution says the second Tuesday of January at noon, I'll gavel us back in, I'll do the prayer and the pledge, swearing the new senators, then there'll be an election for a new lieutenant governor and speaker of the senate. Randy McNally, Moke Ridge is gonna be that person. And I guess when I hand him that gavel and I walk down off that dais, that's when it really hit me. And I'm driving back home, trying to find me a white horse to ride back home, I hadn't found, I've been looking all over Craigslist, but I hadn't found one yet. But I again, wanna say thank you all. This, man, have you ever, 1992, the first time I ever ran, I was on that stage right there and I was running against Paul Horr and there was a debate, I'll never forget this, it was me, Paul Horr and Tom Cuthill. Y'all remember Tom Cuthill? And Tom, it was funny, they asked a question one time, we're going down through, asking a question, they first asked Tom, he answered some question, it wasn't close to whatever the question was. I remember the biggest laugh I got that night, I said, the moderator, I said, "Can you repeat that question after Tom answers it? I can't remember what the question was." And anybody knew him or understood that completely, we became very good friends. But anyways, it was on that stage right there in 1992. And if you'd ever told me, even then, first of all, I'd never thought I'd be an elected official, second of all, if you ever told me I'd be lieutenant governor, I wouldn't have believed it. And it really all started right here. So I wanna say thank you all again. I have a great partner right here, unbelievable, 37 years pretty soon, and we have a great family. There's 13 of us, soon to be 14. We had five grandkids, five and under, so Christmas was fun at our house. But all that was because of Cindy right here. And I wanna say thank her for all those times. You say at Avoca Elementary School, I'd come home on Fridays and she'd been doing this all week. And I'd come home on Fridays and I'd drop one off at Avoca, take another one to Advanced Middle School, another one to Tennessee High. I'd say, "How are you doing this?" She said, "I do it every day." I had the easy job, I had the easy job in Nashville. So again, thank you Cindy and thank you all for this honor tonight. I appreciate that.
We would like to invite everyone into the cafeteria, which is for freshmen, we're We would like to invite everyone into the cafeteria, which is for freshmen, we're gonna
...to address City Council on any matter that is not on the printed agenda for formal consideration. Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will most likely not be given at this time since most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to the city council or as appropriate have staff meet with you to, in an effort to satisfy your concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have been provided a list of individuals desiring to address the city council and there is no one on the list. Is there anyone that would like to address city council on anything that is not on the printed agenda? Having seen none, we'll move on. Let's see. We have no appointments to be made this evening, so let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first item for consideration this evening is Resolution 1713 authorizing tax increment financing in support of an economic development project in the downtown redevelopment district. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
This may I be glad to. This item was the subject of our December the 13th work session and during that work session you heard of the potential use of tax increment financing to advance the redevelopment of the E.W. King Building or property located at 636 and 638 Shelby Street. This property is owned by Mr. Joe Gregory and is the site of a proposed textile manufacturing facility. It will initially employ 25 full-time individuals at an average wage of $35,000. This is a 75,000 square foot building and the proposed renovation will entail approximately $3 million upfit. I think at this point Terry Coppidge representing the owner is here to review the essence of the project similar to her review or similar to the review that you had at the work session. Following her review, Joel Conken, council representing the Bristol Housing and Redevelopment Authority, will go over the financial aspects of the property. I think before Tracy gets started, I would point out that this was a public hearing regarding this matter and a resolution was approved by the housing authority at their November 30th meeting.
And Mr. Sora, if I may, before Tracy's coming on up, I will be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Gregory serves as a board member for my current employer, Gregory Pharma Holdings, so therefore I won't be participating in the discussion nor the vote.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tracy Coppidge. I'm the Director of Operations for Gregory Management Company which Mr. Joe Gregory owns and I will give a presentation on the E.W. King Building which we would call the Bristol Renaissance Center and just give you some information on that and why the TIF funding is important to us for development. This is a photo of the outside of the E.W. King Building as it stands now and as I said, we're looking to call it the Bristol Renaissance Center. A little history about the building. It is more formally known as the E.W. King Building. It has an impressive past and is a vital part of downtown Bristol's future renaissance. The building was originally built in 1920 by E.W. King to house his wholesale goods business. It grew to be one of the largest wholesalers and most innovative buildings in the South. Over the years, the building has served numerous buildings including being the paper warehouse storage facility for Malacote Printing. As far as current ownership, the building was purchased by Mr. Joseph Gregory in 2001. Many of you know that he restored the old Bristol Tennessee post office which is next door to the E.W. King Building. Mr. Gregory has proceeded to invest $600,000 in this building for things like a new roof, exterior brick pointing, cleaning, window and floor repair, security, lighting and parking to name just a few of the things that he has done so far. The building now stands as an excellent facility to provide an important economic, social and cultural impact on the downtown Bristol area, much like the Kingsport Renaissance Center and the Johnson City Renaissance Center provide positive impacts in their respective communities. The building has 75,000 total square feet. Each floor has 15,000 square feet of open space. There's one freight elevator and one passenger elevator. There are 75 windows on the northwest and south walls. Restroom facilities are located on three floors. There's a beautiful wood flooring that is original to the building. We have approximately 80 parking spaces available for lease. We have a loading dock and of course it is located in the historic district of downtown Bristol Tennessee. These are just some photos of the building. This is the north side of the building. This is the south side, the east side and the west side. This shows the parking that we have available. We have two parking lots right behind the building which can accommodate up to 80 visitors and employees and provide staging of deliveries. These two parking lots used to be part of the Coin Textile parking facilities and we've been able to purchase both of these lots over the years. We also have a dock area in the back of the building which will be renovated but as of right now, we can get four delivery trucks in this area. As far as the build-out information, we estimate it to take between nine to 12 months from the start. We anticipate the cost to be at least $3 million. That does include a new freight elevator, a new employee elevator, new electric, water sprinkler, TFC, gas, lighting, flooring, walls, refurbished windows, refurbished restrooms, building out of offices, et cetera. As of right now, the layout is expected to be as follows. The fourth floor will be offices. The second and third floor will be for inventory and the first floor will be for shipping and receiving, embroidery, reception and some other offices in that area. And then the basement will just be used for storage. This is a visual representation of how we see the main floor. On the left-hand side, you can see photos of how it currently looks and then you can see there's different embroidery workstations and there's a reception area and then you're shipping and receiving in the back. This is a fourth floor proposal that we have worked on with the potential tenant and again on the left-hand side, I have photos of how the current state of that floor looks and then this floor is just built out with a lot of workstations, offices and conference rooms. We looked at the local economic benefit that this project will have on construction jobs and based on what we see jobs created, we look to bring in an additional $1 million in wages created just for the construction crew that will be needed. As far as the local economic benefit for employment, as Mr. Sora said, they are looking to create 25 jobs at $35,000 a year, so if you look at the long-term impact factor over 10 years, we're looking at $8.75 million in wages that will be coming to downtown Bristol. There is also a local economic benefit for property taxes. If you look at the tangible personal property tax year one, you're looking at about $10,000. Year two, about $12,000 and then by year 10, you're looking at approximately $114,000 in property taxes that will come in. The benefit of the TIF funding for this project to make it cost-effective for us as a developer is our IRR with the TIF funding at year 10 would be .08%. At year 15, it would be 6.88%. If we did not have the TIF funding to help us, the IRR at year 10 would be negative 6% and at year 15, it would be 1.83%. So you can see as a developer who's looking to spend this amount of money
Comments are limited to matters of city business only. A response will most likely not be given at this time since most cases neither the council nor the city manager will be prepared to effectively respond to the concern. The city manager will look into the matter and report back to the city council or as appropriate have staff meet with you to, in an effort to satisfy your concerns. Comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Groups are encouraged to select a spokesperson to represent them. I have been provided a list of individuals desiring to address the city council and there is no one on the list. Is there anyone that would like to address city council on anything that is not on the printed agenda? Having seen none, we'll move on. We have no appointments to be made this evening, so let's move on to ordinances and resolutions. The first item for consideration this evening is Resolution 1713 authorizing tax increment financing in support of an economic development project in the downtown redevelopment district. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, I'd be glad to. This item was the subject of our December the 13th work session. And during that work session, you heard of the potential use of tax increment financing to advance the redevelopment of the E.W. King Building or property located at 636 and 638 Shelby Street. This property is owned by Mr. Joe Gregory and is the site of a proposed textile manufacturing facility. It will initially employ 25 full-time individuals at an average wage of $35,000. This is a 75,000 square foot building and the proposed renovation will entail approximately $3 million upfit. I think at this point Terry Coppidge representing the owner is here to review the essence of the project similar to her review or similar to the review that you had at the work session. Following her review, Joel Conken, council representing the Bristol Housing and Redevelopment Authority, will go over the financial aspects of the property. I think before Tracy gets started, I would point out that this was a public hearing regarding this matter and a resolution was approved by the housing authority at their November 30th meeting.
And Mr. Sora, if I may, before, as Tracy's coming on up, I will be recusing myself due to a conflict of interest. Mr. Gregory serves as a board member for my current employer, Gregory Pharma Holdings, so therefore I won't be participating in the discussion nor the vote.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Tracy Coppidge. I'm the Director of Operations for Gregory Management Company, which Mr. Joe Gregory owns. And I will give a presentation on the E.W. King Building, which we would call the Bristol Renaissance Center, and just give you some information on that and why the TIF funding is important to us for development. This is a photo of the outside of the E.W. King Building as it stands now. And as I said, we're looking to call it the Bristol Renaissance Center. A little history about the building. It is more formally known as the E.W. King Building. It has an impressive past and is a vital part of downtown Bristol's future renaissance. The building was originally built in 1920 by E.W. King to house his wholesale goods business. It grew to be one of the largest wholesalers and most innovative buildings in the South. Over the years, the building has served numerous buildings, including being the paper warehouse storage facility for Malacote Printing. As far as current ownership, the building was purchased by Mr. Joseph Gregory in 2001. Many of you know that he restored the old Bristol, Tennessee post office, which is next door to the E.W. King Building. Mr. Gregory has proceeded to invest $600,000 in this building for things like a new roof, exterior brick pointing, cleaning, window and floor repair, security, lighting, and parking, to name just a few other things that he has done so far. The building now stands as an excellent facility to provide an important economic, social, and cultural impact on the downtown Bristol area, much like the Kingsport Renaissance Center and the Johnson City Renaissance Center provide positive impacts in their respective The building has 75,000 total square feet. Each floor has 15,000 square feet of open space. There's one freight elevator and one passenger elevator. There are 75 windows on the northwest and south walls. Restroom facilities are located on three floors. There's a beautiful wood flooring that is original to the building. We have approximately 80 parking spaces available for lease. We have a loading dock and, of course, it is located in the historic district of downtown Bristol, Tennessee. These are just some photos of the building. This is the north side of the building. This is the south side, the east side, and the west side. This shows the parking that we have available. We have two parking lots right behind the building, which can accommodate up to 80 visitors and employees and provide staging of deliveries. These two parking lots used to be part of the Coin Textile parking facilities and we've been able to purchase both of these lots over the years. We also have a dock area in the back of the building, which will be renovated, but as of right now, we can get four delivery trucks in this area. As far as the build-out information, we estimate it to take between nine to 12 months from the start. We anticipate the cost to be at least $3 million. That does include a new freight elevator, a new employee elevator, new electric, water sprinkler, TFC, gas, lighting, flooring, walls, refurbished windows, refurbished restrooms, building out of offices, et cetera. As of right now, the layout is expected to be as follows. The fourth floor will be offices. The second and third floor will be for inventory. And the first floor will be for shipping and receiving, embroidery, reception, and some other offices in that area. And then the basement will just be used for storage. This is a visual representation of how we see the main floor. On the left-hand side, you can see photos of how it currently looks. And then you can see there's different embroidery workstations and there's a reception area and then your shipping and receiving in the back. This is a fourth floor proposal that we have worked on with the potential tenant. And again, on the left-hand side, I have photos of how the current state of that floor looks. And then this floor is just built out with a lot of workstations, offices, and conference We looked at the local economic benefit that this project will have on construction jobs. And based on what we see jobs created, we look to bring in an additional $1 million in wages created just for the construction crew that will be needed. As far as the local economic benefit for employment, as Mr. Sora said, they are looking to create 25 jobs at $35,000 a year. So if you look at the long-term impact factor over 10 years, we're looking at $8.75 million in wages that will be coming to downtown Bristol. There is also a local economic benefit for property taxes. If you look at the tangible personal property tax, year one, you're looking at about $10,000. Year two, about $12,000. And then by year 10, you're looking at approximately $114,000 in property taxes that will come in. The benefit of the TIF funding for this project to make it cost-effective for us as a developer is our IRR with the TIF funding at year 10 would be .08 percent. At year 15, it would be 6.88 percent. If we did not have the TIF funding to help us, the IRR at year 10 would be negative 6 percent. And at year 15, it would be 1.83 percent. So you can see as a developer who's looking to spend this amount of money on renovations to bring in jobs and to make it a viable project, this is very important to us. We also see another local benefit to this as we can kind of be a spark to start to where other local downtown businesses will do the same thing. They'll see the renovation project, they'll see the positive impact on downtown Bristol, and then they'll want to do the same thing and hopefully start renovating their businesses as well and continue to upgrade the downtown Bristol area. We feel that the Bristol Renaissance Center is definitely positioned to play a key role in downtown Bristol's future economically, bringing more people, spending more dollars, and having a positive impact on our community. Thank you.
Does any member have questions? A member of council have questions?
It's a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sora?
I think at this time, I'd like to ask Joel to come, Joel Conken, to come to the podium. And the next slide, if you could advance the slide forward. It should detail the financial aspects of the TIF, both the impact on city and county.
Glad to be here. And please feel free to stop me with any questions that you might have. I think, you know, a lot of this is self-explanatory, but would just like to go back through sort of the basics of the TIF process and what you are approving here today. In essence, this document takes the increase in property taxes, subject to certain set-asides and offsets that are required by state law, and redirects those new taxes to the housing authority, who then uses those funds to amortize a loan that is made to the developer to help capitalize the project. Okay? So these numbers, the first number is the starting point. This building, although it's quite a large structure, is only assessed at $119,000. That is an assessment, the appraised value, I think, is $299. It's a 40 percent commercial assessment. So the city's only collecting about $2,600 of property taxes currently on this and the county is collecting, you know, slightly more than that, about $3,000. So these numbers show that after all the statutory deductions, that the city and county increment combined on an annual basis, based on a $3 million appraised value for the new project once it's complete, and that's based on information Ron Hillman has met with the Gregory team and gone through their plans and given us an estimate, an estimated value. And that, you know, is just an estimate. These numbers could be slightly different once the exact appraisal comes in. But the estimate is that the annual TIF increment would be about $46,471 per year with the city and county increments combined. And that's assuming, of course, the county approves this plan as written. That amount of funds will amortize the total, there's a cap on the total incentive amount available to the Gregories, which is $475,000. And that amount, according to my calculations, will, that annual amount will amortize that loan amount over a 15-year period. Any questions?
Does any member of council have questions for our staff?
So in understanding correctly, the life of the TIF is for 15 years?
That's correct. It, the TIF, the 15-year period starts when the construction is complete. There is, the last year, but we set a ceiling or a cap and an end date, which is, the last tax year could be is 2033. So it gives them roughly two years to get this built and on the tax rolls for 2019. And I know they'll probably do it sooner than that, but when you have a partial year, you don't get the full benefit of the increment, so we often defer it for one more year to get the full value.
Any further questions? Do we have a motion to take action?
Motion?
A second.
Would any member of council like to comment further or discuss Resolution 1713?
I'll just, thank you for the presentation and being at our work session also. And I do think with some of the comments you had in your presentation are very accurate for it being an asset for downtown and hopefully a spark for some of the other buildings that have not already made some changes and improvements to do so. And we're very interested in people living, working, playing in our downtown, so to have more folks working and then hopefully some of them stay to play too. So I think it's an asset. Thank you very much.
Is there any other comments from the audience to address council on this matter? Having seen none, Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Young.
Upstaying.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 1714, approving an amendment to the Green Property Redevelopment District. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, Mayor, this was also a topic of discussion at your December 13th work session. This is a proposed amendment to the Green Property Redevelopment District plan by expanding its original boundary. The, this was also considered at the November 30th meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the Bristol Housing and Redevelopment Authority and was unanimously approved during that meeting. To address the expansion, if we could advance the slide. Okay, the, this is property showing the original layout of the Green Property Redevelopment District with State Street at the top of your screen. Volunteer Parkway is on the right-hand side of the screen. And with the Green Property, where now Cootie Brown's Restaurant is situated, is in the shaded blue area. The proposed expansion would take the eastern boundary north to State Street, to the State Street-West State Street intersection. And then the boundary would proceed west to Tent Street and then southerly, in a southerly direction, to Broad Street and then back to the east on Broad Street to tie in at the Volunteer Parkway. This property does exclude the Chamber of Commerce, which is located at 20 Volunteer Parkway. Internal to this amendment, there are now, there will be 29 tax parcels. This area will cover approximately 14 acres. There are many properties located within this proposed redevelopment district that are vacant and considered by definition as being blighted. The expansion of this redevelopment district allows the opportunity to use tax increment financing to bridge funding gaps, to make other projects a reality, much like the resolution that you just considered. This expansion of the redevelopment district will allow the use of TIF financing to support redevelopment of that area.
Does any member of council have questions for our staff?
Since our work session, when we discussed this, have we had any further communications from residents that may have responded to any of the information?
Not with me. I'm unaware if any other staff has had contacts, and I see them shaking their head no. And that also, Steve Seifer's also speaking from the housing authority, Tom Anderson from our Economic Development Group.
And the only thing I recalled from our work session is one of the folks who did contact the office spoke favorably of it and that happened to be a property owner affected by this.
I believe that is the case, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions, is there a motion to take action?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Would any member of council like to comment or discuss Resolution 1714 further?
I think anytime we can do something like this to improve a blighted area is, you know, a step in the right direction and appreciate the work that's been done by the housing authority and their staff and look forward to seeing something new and exciting there.
Creates an additional tool in the toolbox to be able to allow opportunities, just as we saw a few minutes ago, with a similar opportunity that is already in the downtown district for redevelopment. And this could turn into an opportunity, whether it's adaptive reuse of an existing facility there or something new to be on that footprint. So plenty of acreage there to have several opportunities.
Would any member of the audience like to address council on this matter, please? State your name and address when you get up there, please. Yes.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Chaney, and I'm here because of a tire store that I have at 917 Shelby Street. It is in the midst of this, if I understand it correctly.
Yes.
My question is, are there any immediate plans for development of that area now? Are there anything known? Or is it just for future development?
Not definitively, no, sir. This is for future development.
Any consideration being made for those that are in this area as far as relocating them or whatever, or compensating them for moves, that sort of thing?
No, sir.
Okay. Will that be a consideration or could it be?
I think that's probably, once a formal redevelopment plan is brought forth by a developer, that would be a discussion that would be best entertained at that time and more than likely with the developer.
Okay, all right. Thank you, that's all I have.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other member of the audience that would like to address council? Having seen none, Terry Ellis take the vote.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
Next, we have Resolution 1715, approving the naming of a public facility in recognition of Frank W. DeFreeze Jr. and Josephine DeFreeze Wilson. Mr. Sora, would you please summarize?
Yes, this is an exciting opportunity for the city. As council is aware, over the past year, the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center have had a capital funding campaign to assist in the renovation of the expanded education area within the nature center. They recently had discussions with the Massengill DeFreeze Foundation regarding a gift in the amount of $50,000 in support of the expansion of learning opportunities at the nature center. The Massengill Freeze Foundation has requested naming rights for a new classroom and meeting room to be located in the expanded area. As you mentioned, Mayor, they have requested a new space to be named in the honor of Frank DeFreeze and as well as Josephine DeFreeze Wilson. Parks and Recreation Commission gave favorable approval to this request during their meeting in November. Resolution 1715 formally accepts this gift and acknowledges the foundation's contribution by naming and their naming request. I would point out that earlier this year, city council approved a policy document entitled "City Property Naming Policy," and this procedure has been consistent with that measure that was adopted at the time. I'd also like to recognize Steve Everhart this evening here with the Massengill DeFreeze Foundation, as well as Robin Fire Robin and Sherri Willinger here with the Friends of Steel Creek Nature Center.
Good deal. Does any member of council have questions for staff? Is there a motion to take action?
Motion?
A second.
Would any member of council like to further comment or discuss Resolution 1715?
I think we want to ask Friends if they would like to speak, if Sherri is president or my husband, Robin, who has dedicated a good bit of his life, not just his free time, his life, to fundraising over the past several months. And Steve Everhart is raising his hand. You want to go first or you want them to go first?
Thank you, council. I appreciate your working with us on naming for these two fine folks. I know you realize, for the ones that have been around here a while, that Frank and Josephine, brother and sister, thought very much of this community. There are not many times that Massengill DeFreeze Foundation gets to leave a legacy of sorts in our neighborhood. In fact, coming from the other side of town, Lord only knows, we could really use it over there. But anyhow, qualifying this situation, we, as the foundation, really had in mind doing something at DeFreeze Park, right, Terry? And we worked on it for a couple of years, had UT and Virginia Tech both down here to do some work with us of enhancing, which I think y'all still have the works going, enhancing DeFreeze Park down there, which, just like the blight you were speaking of, would very much enhance that neighborhood. Well, as you know what happened, I'm in Sunday School with Margaret and Robin. So much happened for that project then. But we are excited. We're really excited for what's going to be happening at the nature center, the folks. I'm participating with a group in Washington County, the Master Gardeners there, and we're hoping it'll give us an outlet there, just because the state line separates, and I'm sure it will. But also, I'd like for you to keep in mind that the DeFreeze name is still on that piece of property down there. And I'm sure, over time, there's still going to be a need when we find a place to deposit some of the whatevers, that we could possibly be some help in that in the future. Not so soon, but somewhat in the future. Thanks again for y'all honoring these folks.
While Sherri's coming up, I'll just say thank you very much, Steve. And also, I think there's going to be events where we can really recognize everybody once we get to that point. And that's, will be a very, very exciting point to get to. So really appreciate it and thank the board members fervently from all of us up here, as well as other folks. And I'll just say, the Friends group is awesome and Sugar Hollow is an awesome park and it needs a Friends group, nonprofit group, that can advocate and do some things too. So just keep that in mind, push it with some folks who might be willing to do that. And this group, I'm sure, would help them get it started.
I just want to thank the Massengill DeFreeze Foundation. This is our biggest donation so far for equipping the nature center expansion. And I think it's quite appropriate that the DeFreeze and the DeFreeze Wilson names will be on that room. And a lot of wonderful things will go on there, and we certainly appreciate this donation. I also want to thank Robin Fire Robin, Terry Napier, Sony Shermer, Becky Wilkerson, and Jeremy Stout from the nature center for all the work they've done with our fundraising. And especially thank Terry for his perseverance. I think he's worked with the Massengill DeFreeze Foundation for quite some time and they've finally found a fitting place for this endowment. Certainly appreciate it. And I thank the city council for making this possible. I know y'all have worked very hard over the last several years to see all this come to fruition. Thank all of you.
Would any other member of the audience like to make any comments towards this matter? I'll say thank you to Steve, Sherri, and Robin for being here. If there are no further comments, I believe we're ready for the vote, Terry.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Mayor Keen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Power?
Yes.
This brings us to the consent agenda. Mr. Sora, would you please read the items on tonight's consent agenda?
Yes, Mayor. Item A, minutes of the December 6, 2016 city council meeting. Item B, minutes of the December 13, 2016 city council work session. Item C, Resolution 17-1, authorizing the purchase of software support for the fire department. Item D, Resolution 17-2, awarding a bid for the purchase of a one-ton cab and chassis with dump bed. And Item E, Resolution 17-3, awarding a bid for the purchase of extended cab pickup truck. Item F, Resolution 17-4, awarding a bid for the purchase of a one-ton flatbed truck with lift gate. Item G, Resolution 17-5, awarding a bid for the purchase of one-ton pickup truck with service body. Item H, Resolution 17- Item F, Resolution seventeen dash four, awarding a bid for the purchase of a one-ton flatbed truck with lift gate. Item G, Resolution seventeen five, awarding a bid for the purchase of one-ton pickup truck with service body. Item H, Resolution seventeen dash six, awarding a bid for the purchase of two three-quarter ton pickup trucks with service bodies. Item I, Resolution seventeen dash seven, awarding a bid for the purchase of two sport utility vehicles. Item J, seventeen dash eight, awarding a bid for the design and development of bid documents for the painting of the Evoca water tank. Item K, Resolution seventeen dash nine, awarding a bid for recycling services. Item L, Resolution seventeen dash ten, awarding a bid for the purchase of bulk fuel. Item M, Resolution seventeen eleven, authorizing payment for connection fee for natural gas service at fire station number five. And item N, Resolution seventeen dash twelve, awarding a bid for the demolition of a building located at five sixty-four Volunteer Parkway.
Would any member of council like any item to be removed from the consent agenda? Having seen none, do we have a motion to approve these items?
Move to approve.
Second.
Tara, please call the vote.
Vice Mayor Young?
Yes.
Councilman Power, Robin?
Yes.
Mayor King?
Yes.
Councilman Powers?
Yes.
I think we're ready for our Board of Education. Leah's on report, Dr. Gary Lilly.
Hope you all had a nice Christmas and New Years. We were happy to welcome students back today, and even though they have been gone on Christmas break, we've still had a lot of things going on in the school system. Before Christmas, we had the Doc Maples Holiday Hoops Tournament, which is a three-day girls' basketball tournament, and we had eight teams playing, including a team from South Carolina and West Virginia. Of course, after Christmas, we had the Arby's Classic, and as is usual, we had really great crowds, and that was a lot of fun for five days for our guys and lots of people that came in from the community and the region. This weekend, we've got the Brawl in the Hall Wrestling Tournament, and that also pulls in a lot of folks. We have teams from Virginia and North Carolina and all across Tennessee, including Chattanooga and Knoxville, so that'll be a lot of fun. Certainly, it's fun for our students here, but also pulls in a lot of people, and that's good for, they have fun, but they also enjoy their time here in Bristol, as they eat and stay and spend money. So, I do want to let you know about a meeting we are hosting next Wednesday, January eleventh, at 5:00 P.M. It is a Every Student Succeeds Act Town Hall, and the Tennessee Commissioner of Education, Candace McQueen, is coming to talk about Tennessee's plan for ESSA, and that is actually, Every Student Succeeds Act is the follow-up to No Child Left Behind. So, it's a pretty big deal in education circles, and Tennessee just recently released their draft plan, so it is a pretty good opportunity for educators and students and parents and interested community members and community leaders to come hear more about that law. So, again, that's next Wednesday at 5:00 P.M. in the new Frank Winston Auditorium, so we're happy about hosting it there. And the board and I just really look forward to our school facility study follow-up kickoff later this month, and we're very excited about and appreciative for the county's bonding initiative, and just can't wait to get it started. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lilly. City managers report.
First, I'd like to indicate that Dr. Lilly and I will be traveling to Miraval tomorrow to meet with other managers and directors of schools of independent school districts. As you know, I think there's thirty-five independent school districts across the state, and we'll be meeting with a number of those to talk about issues and concerns that impact all of us. So, I'd like to remind City Council of our meeting on Friday, January the sixth, Tri-City's Legislative Breakfast, will commence at 8:00 A.M. in the Bruton Smith Building. We'll actually start breakfast about twenty after eight, with the presentation starting at nine A.M. Also, on Monday, Monday the ninth, we'll have a TIF presentation to our county commissioners, so much as was presented tonight, we'll have the same presentation to the Bristol-area county commissioners. Mayor Venable's instrumental in putting that together. We'd certainly like to extend you the opportunity to be there. I think this will be a good opportunity to further nurture relationships with our county commissioners. Again, this will be at noon in our Municipal Annex Conference Room on Monday, January the ninth. On Tuesday, January seventeenth, we'll also have a ribbon cutting and grand opening of our city clinic and wellness center. This will commence at 10:00 A.M., and it's at two sixty Midway Street. It's right above Appalachian Orthopedics, so we hope you all have an opportunity to enjoy that.
And you're not having cake then, right?
Donuts.
Good, just checking, and thank you for having water tonight, too, in addition to ponchos. Thank you. Sorry.
Also, I would echo the excitement that we have on the kickoff meeting with the joint meeting with City Council and our Board of Education at 5:30 on the seventeenth. Remind you of our 5:30 work session on January the twenty-fourth, as well as our council retreat, which will commence at 9:00 A.M. on Tuesday, January the thirty-first, at the Lodge at Steel Creek Park. Busy month.
Well, do city council member comments?
I can start with just a couple. We had a bid for recycling services, and I would just encourage any of our citizens, as well as our staff, when we see those overflowing at some of the locations, to be sure and call that we want waste management to do a good job, and they don't always know, and our city doesn't always know when they're full, especially this time of year after Christmas, they get loaded up. So, make a call. Usually, they get emptied pretty quickly, so, but we don't have eyes everywhere, so appreciate people helping. Also, cold weather is, we do have some cold weather. We had a little bit. We're going to need to have a little bit more. Appreciate our community relations glove, we spread the glove project, and also just a reminder to all of us that times after Christmas with the weather, and sometimes people might have spent a little bit more, or had really intense family times, that this can be a hard time. Also, I helped at Second Harvest Food Bank, and we got some of the stats on hunger in our region, and that continues to be an issue for a lot of our families and our children and school kids, et cetera. And I'll just also echo excitement about the clinic, and excited that we can keep Mary Lee Williams so happy with opening up the clinic. It's a big day. And remind everybody that this month, there's a Martin Luther King Junior holiday, and there's some different events connected with that. It's a good time for community service. It's a good time to remember some of the important things in our country and our history. Also, invite people, I think I sent an email to City Council, but for Bristol's Promise on January twenty-sixth at lunch, we have a program on ACE, which is Adverse Childhood Experiences, what that does to the brain. There's new brain research. To me, it's really fascinating. I knew that kids with adverse experiences had problems but did not know about brain research. That's very fascinating. So, we have somebody coming from Johnson City who actually works with crime prevention in their police department, who is going to talk, and I'm looking forward to that, and anyone is invited to come to that. And last, and maybe most importantly, I'll echo Gary for thanking the county commissioners who, for some of the county commissioners, it was a hard, hard vote for them to make to do the bond issue, and to build new schools in Solomon County, as well as what will help with our Vance Middle School. And I think we'll all look back that that's a pretty momentous occasion, and it was a very intense meeting, and really appreciate the thoughtfulness, and also Mayor Richard Venable's facilitation of that meeting and his support of that bond issue. So, thank you.
And to piggyback on what Margaret has said, of course, the work of the county commission, I think we will look back and see this as an outstanding, correct step in the right direction in regard to our schools, that, you know, from a city's perspective, we have tried to maintain our schools and to do everything that we can, and it's wonderful that we're working in a partnership with the county and with Kingsport and with Bristol. I think that it speaks well of our region, and that's not lost on people coming into our area, and it's not lost at the state level, that we, as a region, are willing to work so well together, and that truly the bay lifts all ships. It's not just an issue for Bristol, it's not just an issue for Kingsport, it's not just an issue for the county, it's an issue for everyone, and with the main focus being on providing the appropriate education so that our children can go into the workforce and be successful. And that, at the end of the day, is the most valuable gift we can give our young people, is the ability to stand on their own two feet, and education is everything in regard to that. Additionally, I think it's exciting that we have such a great city staff, that Public Works, that is constantly on the ball, trying to make sure that our roads are where they should be, our utilities are where they should be, and that we're able to get out and about. Additionally, I greatly appreciate the efforts that have gone into developing the TIFs that we've awarded tonight. This is economic development continuing, and it's another first, it's another right step in the right direction. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Twenty sixteen was a successful year in Bristol, Tennessee. It was a tumultuous year for us as a nation, and I look forward to going into twenty seventeen and for us to continue to work closely together.
I think the opportunities for twenty seventeen are just amazing, as we look at the opportunities, you know, over the last few years, you've seen how the school system has taken it to a digital scale that I think many, it's still, as I think about how many of our kids, all through the high school, the middle school, have computers and readily accessible to use right there in the classroom, is remarkable. As we look at those things that are coming down as opportunities, you know, constantly, those behind the scenes of what you touched on, the economic development part, we have full-time staff who work on that, as well as networks, as well as folks with BTS, and also some regional partners who help on those opportunities. And occasionally, some of those just kind of pop up, and then they're in place, but many of those, it takes a lot of the right opportunity fits, something that we have available, and then it can come to fruition. And those aren't the, those aren't those knock 'em out of the park, it's the persistence of a team that works together, and that's some of the opportunity. We've seen that also with some of our local partners out in investing in some of their manufacturing areas on their own, and, you know, at the end of the day, we want to be able to have a place that you can live there, you can work there, you can play there, and we do it in a responsible way where there's, and what's that look like? That looks like me being able to help out a neighbor if they need it, or potentially some partners in our area, like United Way, being able to help out. And those opportunities, look at what happened last month, well, the last two months with Gatlinburg, and the challenges that they've gone through, and how some of our local corporations and so many of our faith community and others have stepped up to help in just the pouring out their heart to try and help neighbors who are a little further down the road. So, you know, great things to come.
Good deal. You know, I can't remember a Christmas season where we had more activity downtown, more activity, retail activity within the entire city. I'm thinking that our numbers for retail activity are going to be up, and we do have a lot to be thankful for. I want to say special thanks to Beth Reinhardt from Chamber of Commerce, I think she's taken off now, Malin Moultral from Bristol Baseball, Friends of Steel Creek for being here. We wish everybody a new year, and we are adjourned.